I felt like I was served one. Now get off of the square.
Yeah, yeah. That was so funny. For one of those shit.
Like I felt like I was served one.
Are you served one?
She was appointed this year and she ran. She was appointed.
I don't know actually. Talking about, yes. Why would it matter? We didn't go in for her on one side.
She actually, she called me.
Yeah.
She'll love that. I was her neighbor for, for years. You know her well. You recognize yourself as well.
He says she's a nanny.
Yeah, I'm down. But I'm down. I wear company shop. She didn't have to question. We were met up with that.
Hi Eric. What's up?
I'm down. I'm down. She's on the very end of the left. I'll put you there next to me.
She's on the left.
I'm right just next to her. I look at her. She's like, oh. She's on the left. 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 She's on the left.
I don't actually do that. Talking about, yes. Why would it matter? We didn't go in for her on one side.
She actually, she called me.
Yeah.
She'll love that. I, I was her neighbor for, for years. I know her well. You recognize yourself as well.
He says she's a nanny.
Yeah, I'm down. But I'm down. I wear company shop. She didn't have to question. We were met up with that.
Hi Eric. What's up?
I'm down. 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 I was her neighbor for, for years. I know her well. You recognize yourself as well.
He says she's a nanny.
Yeah, I'm down. But I'm down. I wear company shop. She didn't have to question. We were met up with that.
Hi Eric. What's up? Hi. What's up?
I'm down. 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 She's on the very end of the left. I'll put you there next to me. I'm right just next to her. 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 I'm right just next to her.
Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the West Ocean Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Monday, November the 10th. To start the meeting, will you please stand and join on the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America to the Republic of British States for the creation of a nation indivisible and indivisible in the justice world.
Thank you. Please be aware, this meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube and also the meeting may be audio or video recorded by people present in the room. We only have two agenda items tonight, public comment and then a conditional use hearing. Is there anybody here who is attending to raise an issue or ask a question of staff or the board about anything in the township other than the conditional use hearing? Very good. Well, then we'll move on to the other item of business, which is the conditional use hearing. And I'm going to pass this over now to run the proceedings to our solicitor, Kristen Kamm.
Thank you. So this is a conditional use application that was filed by J A S Real Estate Holdings, LLC. They see conditional use approval under section 84-96F, as in Frank, one of the West Ocean Township zoning ordinance. The applicant owns three separate parcels of property, approximately 4.54 acres in total. The addresses of the property is 326 West Town Road, 721 East Neil Street, and 739 East Neil Street. Applicant proposes to consolidate these three parcels into one lot and develop a new 12,155 square foot building to be used to service motor vehicles as part of the Kia Vehicle Sales and Service Agency, which is currently located at 326 West Town Road. Applicant also proposes to build a 525 square foot addition to the existing building, which is located at 739 East Neil Street, and that building will be used for offices for the Kia Vehicle Sales and Service Agency. I have various board exhibits I'd like to put into the record. The first one is the conditional use application, and that was, came with a cover letter dated September 9th, 2025. That's board exhibit one. The second exhibit is a letter from applicant's counsel, Gina Gerber, agreeing to extend the MPC time clock to hold the hearing until this evening, and that letter was dated September 22, 2025. Board exhibit three is a proof of publication. It's actually published twice. Tonight's hearing was advertised in the daily local news on October 24th and October 31st, 2025. Board exhibit four is the affidavit of posting and photographs of posting. Shelby Smith posted the property on, let's see, November 3rd, 2025. Board exhibit five is an affidavit of mailing, again completed by Shelby Smith, the Township zoning officer. She mailed notice of tonight's hearing to property owners within 500 feet of the property, and a copy of the notice and the letter that was sent is the exhibit B5. B6 is the Township zoning hearing board opinion and order dated July 28th, 2025. The applicant did need to go to the ZHB for various zoning relief related to this project. They received a variance to allow an eight-foot side yard setback on the north and a 14-foot side yard setback to the west. They also received a variance to allow a minimum green area of 22.83%. So those were the, uh, three variances granted. Board exhibit seven is the actual plans that accompany the conditional use application, the preliminary final land development plan prepared by Howell Engineering with a date of August 29th, 2025. The eighth exhibit, I always like the board to have an aerial exhibit of parcels that are the subject of the application, so you can picture where they are. And then board nine is the West Ocean Township Planning Commission meeting minutes, and I think they're still in a draft format of October 14th, 2025. I believe that they recommended for approval of this application. So those are the board exhibits. Is there any objection to those being admitted, Mr. Collegrico?
No.
Is there anybody in the audience that owns or leases property in close proximity that wishes to be a party to the application? Okay, let the record reflect, nobody's requesting party status. With that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Collegrico, who will present his witnesses.
Thank you, Luke Collegrico here, on behalf of the applicant. We have three witnesses that will be presenting today. Jim Sappala is going to speak for the entity that's acquiring the property and is going to do the improvements. Joe Russella, our civil engineer, and Frank Devani, if he gets here off the Scoop Expressway very quickly. If not, I guess I'll be the traffic expert. But in any event, Kristen outlined everything that is simply as to what we're doing here. There are three tax parcels, one of which already has the existing dealership. The other two, on the corner, there's an office building that's going to be expanded slightly, about 500 square feet, give or take. And third tax parcel now is the, is going to be demolished. There's a building on it that used to be used for automobile repairs, and Jim can get into that when he testifies. The use is permitted via conditional use, and with that, I'm going to ask my first witness, Mr. Sappala, to be sworn.
Is your right hand. It's for the testimony about the vibe, be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth. So help you God, or so you affirm?
I do. Do you state your name and business address for the record, please?
Uh, James Sappala, 326 West Town Road, West Ocean Township.
The applicant is J A S Real Estate Holdings, LLC. What's your relationship to that entity?
Uh, I'm a member.
And you're authorized to speak here when the entity, and bind the entity to that?
Yeah, yes.
Procedurally, I've handed out exhibit packages to the board members, and Kristen. Exhibit A1 is the enclosure letter, A2 incorporation of the zoning ordinance of the township. Exhibits A3, 4, 5, I'm admitting or offering for admission to prove ownership interest in the property. I'm going to go right to exhibit A6, our first visual, and I think that's the aerial that's on the screen to the board's road. Jim, using that aerial, can you orient the property and what is surrounding the property?
Yeah, so our dealership's on West Town Road. We had an opportunity to purchase the old Vet Building. Uh, that's our store right there. Um, the veterinarian building was there for many years and she passed away, ended, and we had an opportunity to buy that. And then at the same time, we had an opportunity to buy the adjacent property that was a repair center. And everything around it is all commercial. This is all commercial area right here.
Right, if you want to go quickly, exhibit A7 is a series of photographs. We can probably just, Jim can speak to each one more descriptive of the surroundings of the property. Jim, if you could speak to each one of these photographs and orient the board.
Yeah, these are just basically, you know, what's there and the out. Currently, that's a side picture of the Vet Building. It's on, located on the corner across from the County Building. Another small house that we've taken down right here that was next to the Vet Building. Another side angle looking down to the repair facilities in the back. And there's another picture of what was there. Very old buildings.
If we were to page through them collectively, I don't think we need to go through each photograph and have testimony on each one, but suffice it to say, these photographs are being offered to give a portrayal of the area surrounding the site as well as the site itself, correct?
Correct.
All right. Moving now to exhibit A8, which is the site plan prepared by Howell Engineering. You authorize preparation of that site plan, correct?
I did.
All right. So you heard me say originally that the existing dealership, there's really nothing with this application that affects the existing dealership lot, correct?
Correct. We were just, that's all brand new, relative, like a year old. We haven't been there a year.
And that received land development approval from the township last year, as I recall.
Correct.
So on the corner, let's go to the corner lot where you said it's, uh, used to be veterinary offices, and I see a little white rectangle there. Is that representative of where the addition to that building would be?
Yeah, that's kind of like an L shape, and we just wanted to square the building up on the corner. You know, we need the room on the inside. It's not a lot, it's like 500 feet, I think, or something like that. And, um, yeah, so once I show you the other pictures, you'll see how, how nice it looks. And then this is our, the building, our, and the additional repair facility back here in the back of the one building.
Okay, so the office building is situated right now, the one that you're going to be utilizing, utilizing rather, is at 739 East Neil Street, correct?
Correct.
And the other building, which is being taken down, is at 321 West Town. Well, no, that's the one that's already existing. 721 Neil Street's the address of the other?
Correct.
And the office building is going to be used for your offices or offices of the dealership? Is that correct?
Yeah, so we just had this project through and here to the township, and we appreciate that, you guys helping us out with that, but we've already outrun our building. So, uh, all of our accounting, business development, everything's going to shift from this main building over to here. Uh, we're going to utilize our upstairs that we have here, our second level, for sales and marketing. And the shop here in the back is going to be another 14 or 16 days additional service facility, and we're building this to handle any overnight, you know, repair work that needs to be done, engines, transmissions. And then the main shop here that we just built, um, will be all what we call fast-moving maintenance, will change as, quick stuff that goes in and out. This won't, none of the, this, this building here won't be customer-facing, nor will this building here be customer-facing.
When you're saying this building, you're talking about the new service building and the addition to the building, to the office building?
And, 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 correct.
Yep. Just so the record can reflect this.
Yeah.
All right, and I think if we can go to exhibit A9, you have some renderings of what these buildings are going to look like.
So this is our service center, which gives the same glass, uh, look on the front that we're going to be building in the back. And it's, uh, if you've been past our new store, it looks a lot like our brand new store. Same elements, the black bandura on the top, Kia logo on top of it. That's another aerial view of it. And then if you go to the next one, this is our new management office. So the extra 500 squares this corner off right here, and so it's, looks more uniform.
I don't have any further questions for Mr. Sappala.
Did more members have any questions?
I have one question. The additional spaces that have been provided because of the ability to consolidate all the lots and have more space for vehicles, what, what's, what primarily will be part of the, of the overall dealership? Is it new inventory? Is it, what will be there?
Uh, right here in the back is new inventory.
The back of the existing dealership?
Existing dealership. And then we're going to have some new inventory in here, right in that area.
That's behind the office building?
Correct, behind our office building.
Do you store additional inventory that you can't currently accommodate on site somewhere else in the area today?
We do.
Okay, will you need that in the future or not?
We will. We're selling a lot of cars. Unfortunately, this is, still isn't enough really room. So that's another project we'll probably talk for.
And where is that located? Where is the service facility?
Uh, it's down the street. So I rent some property from Scott, Duke Scott, down the street, um, and I store cars down there too. Not a ton, but there's probably less than 100 cars in there.
I have a question. In the service facility lot, or building, I'm sorry, um, two questions relative to that. Is there any underground storage tanks there, or will they be used for waste store, for, you know, waste from oil or any, any type of waste from anything?
Yeah, there will be waste, but all that's above ground.
Okay.
And storage units above ground. The same setup that we had approved in our current building. There are tanks above ground, tanks that are double insulated.
Just contain the waste oil?
Yeah, yeah, waste oil. Yeah, then they come and they pump it out.
Right.
You know, weekly.
Okay, now what are you using now existing? Are they going to be removed? Do you have any tanks that you're existing?
No, there's no tanks here.
So what are you using for maintenance, right? When you do maintenance on cars and stuff, what do you put in the waste?
In the main, in the main building. That's where we have our waste store.
It's a waste oil tank? Is it above ground?
Above ground.
Inside the building?
Inside the building.
Okay.
Yeah. So in the south part of our existing building is a storage room where we have oil, AD3s, all that stuff.
And that will stay in the building?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, it'll be in that building, and we'll have that over here in this building too. But it'll be in the back of the building, in the security area and stuff like that.
I have a question. Are you familiar with, or are you aware of our township ordinance, 72-24-2, has to do with sidewalks? And I see here on your plan, I don't see any sidewalks depicted either along West Town Road or along East Neil Street here. We have orders in place with states that any new subdivision shell on sidewalks, and I don't see anything there, but what's your thinking there?
We, since this is a conditional use application, we can't ask for a waiver of that provision, but we had intended to ask for a waiver of that provision at the land development, when you see land development plans, for reasons that Jim and Joe can explain. Jim, why don't you go first as to your reasoning, and Joe, if there's engineering reasons that you want to supplement that with, feel free to join in. Again, have you sworn?
Yeah, so on West Town Road, right here where we initially came in for, you know, approval, there is very limited room to put sidewalks. We actually, our sign right here that we have to go back and forth on, but eventually our sign, there's, there's not even enough room. It's very close to the side of the walk right here. And really on West Town Road, you have, there's only one business that has a sidewalk. It's down the street on the right-hand side at the dance studio or, there's a, like a dance studio or something down the street, but it butts up, the sidewalk's actually nowhere. And one end of the sidewalk goes into the graveyard down there, and the other sidewalk, the other end of the sidewalk would go into, was deep in the bank, and so there's really not a lot of traffic, walking traffic on this road. It's all industrial area. You got Aduwe Pal here, you know, you have, behind me, you have Best Buy, and this is all industrial, all in here.
Didn't we grant something where we allowed you to move your sign closer to the building?
You did, but it's still really tight up to the, actually, we wanted it, initially we wanted it, initially it was supposed to be in the middle of the parking lot, according to, and you, and, and you guys granted it for it to be where it has been for the last 20 years, up closer to the road. But with that being closer to the road, there's a lot, there's not a ton of room left out there. Maybe three foot, four foot, five foot, something like that. Not a lot of room.
I mean, I disagree with the state, because there isn't a lot of foot traffic, and personally there are people who walk this stretch of road daily or ride their bikes, so.
Well, bikes wouldn't be on here, sidewalks.
I mean, they might, though.
Well, they shouldn't be, but.
It really matters. I mean, if it's pedestrian, pedestrians do make their way down the road, and this board is a board that really wants to expand sidewalks and mobility.
I understand. But also it's business owners, you know, it's, you know, it puts the burden back on the business owner to have that. We, we're responsible for them sidewalks, we're responsible for cleaning them. And so when you're in industrial area.
As are we, when we have sidewalks under our house. Are you familiar with the comprehensive plan, which was adopted by the township back in June 2019? Specifically, there was a section there about pedestrian, bicycle circulation, access, and safety, and part of that plan, the proposal was to add sidewalks along West Town Road as well as along East Neil Street. So it's part of our comprehensive plan to have these sidewalks in place, and we had to start some, and we take that opportunity with subdivision, come before us, before the board to go ahead and add them as part of their installation.
It's good feedback to have, as I said, you know, we, if, if the consensus is that that's what you want, and that's what you want, we know it is part of your ordinance, then we're going to have to talk internally, and Joe's going to have to put sidewalks on this plan. I understand it's a waiver request, but this kind of feedback is good. We really know what the temperature was. Some townships would rather just take a fee and live with the sidewalk somewhere else where they serve a better purpose. But if you're suggesting here that West Town Road is a pedestrian corridor and the people will use it, then that's information that we need to have, and it sounds like we haven't. So this is a conversation we can have during the land development process? Yeah, I mean, we.
I have one other question for Mr. Sappala. You, you said that the new, shown as proposed building there is like the two or three day kind of repair jobs, but it won't be customer-facing. So if you're bringing a vehicle in to, basically you left several days, you'd still be coming into the main area and then it can be moved over by mechanic at some point?
Yeah, a porter would be moving it over. So there, you know, we consolidated this down the one driveway too. There was a total of four across here, so, and there was one right up here on the end. That's really like a hazard to get in and out, but we consolidated down one. This is going to be more of an out here, and then all traffic will be coming in here and around the other side. And then this is, this area here is all employees would be involved in moving cars in and out.
Thank you.
I have a question on your architectural, the third page is, I guess it's going to be the proposed office. You're not tearing that going down? You're deciding on it?
No, yeah, we're, yeah, we're gonna try to sell this as much as we possibly can on it.
But are you building up?
No, yeah, it'll be the same height. We actually might take, it's a pitch, it's a pitch roof now, so we, we'll probably flatten it, so it has that same flat style, you know, as the other buildings do, or like a campus that's part of it.
Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you. Thanks, gentlemen. You got my good friend, Joe. Our next witness is Joe Russella. Joe, would you sworn?
It's for the testimony about the vibe, be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. So help you God, or so you affirm?
I do.
Thank you.
State your name and business address for the record, please.
Joseph Russella, R U S S E L L A, and I'm employed by Howell Engineering, and our address is 1250 Rights Lane, West Chester, PA, 19380.
Exhibit A14 is Mr. Russella's CV. He's been accepted as an expert in civil engineering design by this board, by your zoning board. Rather than go through that, all those questions, I would ask that he be recognized as an expert in civil engineering design.
I'm comfortable with it, over the board members. Thank you.
Joe, you prepared, or your office prepared, exhibit A10. Brian, do you want to punch that up, the land development plan? All right, let's go to a sheet that we can use to testify from here. That's good.
Yeah, that's good.
Exhibit A10, we have a sheet up on the screen here. What, what sheet is that? Can you tell, Joe?
Uh, that sheet, C01.1, which is the land development plan.
That plan is.
Two point. C02.1, but it's still a land development plan.
And that's before the township now going through the review process for the land development cycle, correct?
Yes, it's been submitted as part of the package with the conditional use application.
All right, I'm not going to ask you a bunch of questions about the land development plan. There'll be plenty of time for that over the next couple of months. Suffice it to say, there's landscaping requirements in the township zoning ordinance and subdivision land development ordinance. Was the land development plan set, prepared to be in compliance with those landscaping requirements?
Yes, it was.
Right now, there's virtually no landscaping on the property, correct?
Uh, that's correct. With previous use, there was just a little bit of what I would just call foundation-type plannings around the old house that was taken down. With the new landscape plan, which Brian's getting to, we've provided a more robust landscaping plan along West Town Road and Neil, East Neil Street to buffer the uses with a combination of deciduous and evergreen plants and shade trees. And then we added some buffering along the property line, common with the adjoining commercial business to the west and onto northwest where the yard is for the best line, which is their outdoor storage yard. So we have a robust landscaping plan.
This testimony might be easier for the board to follow if we just go back to the rendered site plan, Exhibit A8. That land development plan is two black and white.
Yeah.
So if we go back to Exhibit A8 for the rest of your testimony, I think that would be fine.
Sure.
Although you probably, now that I said go back to Exhibit A8, although you probably can't see where the stormwater management facilities are gonna be on Exhibit A8, because I presume they're gonna be underground. Can you briefly speak to how stormwater is proposed, how you propose, rather, to control stormwater management on the property?
Yeah, so depicted on the plan to the north of the existing two-story building, there is a, a green area which is turf pavers. And underneath the turf pavers is a subsurface infiltration bed. That infiltration bed then follows a route to the southwest, just above the parking area on East Neil Street where there is another underground detention basin. And then the, the combination of the two will then discharge into a swell along East Neil Street and then into a discharge pipe that follows a southerly route across the Aduy Pile property.
Right now, there's virtually no stormwater management on the two lots that are really proposed for development. There is on the new dealership lot, but as for the other lots, it's fairly rudimentary.
That's correct, that's correct, yes.
You also submitted an environmental impact assessment report, did you not?
Uh, yes, we did.
And that report states that the property will be serviced by public water and public sewer?
Uh, yes, that's correct. Currently, the, the existing buildings are provided by a public sewerage which will continue. Public water, we did acquire a will-serve letter from Aqua. And in conjunction with that, we're proposing a water main extension that will go down East Neil Street where it will provide public water to the existing building, to the proposed building, and to the adjoining route, business property to the west. In addition to that, there will also be a, a fire hydrant on the, on the corner. That's on the eastern corner of the new driveway.
The Exhibit A13, that's the will-serve letter from Aqua?
Yes.
And you're not aware of any issue with sewer capacity for the proposed improvements?
Uh, no, we recently obtained a planning module exemption waiver from DEP for sewer.
What's the height of the highest building on the property?
Uh, I think the existing building is just around 26 feet, a little over two stories. The peak roof and the proposed building will be similar, right around 26, 28 feet, depending upon the final architecture.
And have you reviewed the township fire marshal, the ability to service the complex once all is constructed?
Uh, yes, before we went to the zoning hearing board and we were proposing the, the two-story shop building, I met with Andrea Testa before she retired to discuss the location of the building and if there were any fire concerns. And so long as the building was sprinkled, we did the water main extension and installed a fire hydrant from a safety access. She was comfortable with our building and design.
But for a couple of exceptions, which I'm gonna ask you to detail in just a minute, is it your testimony that the proposed development is compliant with the area bulk requirements for the NPD, multi-purpose district, as set forth in Section 84-34B as employed?
Uh, yes, we, we obtained three variances that were mentioned earlier by Ms. Camp on the, the building setback placement and the green coverage. The existing building on the corner is non-conformity, just based a setback from its proximity to the setback on East Neil Street. And the parking that's, that's along West Town Road and East Neil Street remains non-conforming, but we reduced the non-conformity where it is zero feet to the right-of-way lines. We've increased it to 10 and 12 feet to make it better condition, to make it align better with the buildings.
You also reduced the existing non-conforming on the proposed service shop, the proposed building there, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. The setbacks are less than what they were.
And that relief was previously referenced by Ms. Camp and has been locked as a board exhibit that was the zoning hearing board decision. Bear with me for just a second. I just spoke about the area bulk requirements of the ordinance. Is the proposed development complying with the design standards for the multi-purpose development district as set forth in Section 84-37, capital C as intended?
Yes.
And I'm not going to take you through all of the applicable performance standards in Article 14. But if I were to take you through each one of those performance standards, would it be your testimony that this application is complying with those standards?
Uh, yes, we've, we've met all that criteria that's identified in that section.
And no additional zoning relief, other than the relief that you previously identified as being sought in conjunction with this development?
No, no, no other variance relief is needed.
I have no further questions for Mr. Russella.
I have a question. That area we're referring to earlier where the basins might be, I noticed it's about 64, 80 square feet, or it's a 3.28% reduction of the impervious area. Do you know what the impervious area was and will be with the new design, with the new shrubbery and various other things?
Yeah, the...
Because I was just concerned about the reduction in impervious area it's gonna encompass as a result of the engineering activities.
Yeah, so the, the minimum green area that was identified helped us to, to get to that 22.83%, where 30% is the minimum required. And we were able to do that by being over the, the 20%. And by using this as grass pavers, it's not considered impervious. So that was a relief that we obtained.
So you did get relief to go below the 30% impervious area?
Yes, and that's what, and then that, this area helps support that by allowing it to be used as grass pavers.
And drainage for the...
And drainage, so what'll happen is the, the turf pavers will then drain into the infiltration system that's underneath. So the, so it, it again acts as grass by allowing water to be able to go through rather than just direct runoff as if it were asphalt.
Are cars parked on top of there?
Yeah, yeah, you can park cars over top of that, yes.
So how do you make sure it doesn't get padded down and to become impervious?
So, yeah, so the grass pavers, they're, they're, it's a paving block that allows in between each cell for called grass or impervious material to grow through. So you get a combination of the turf paver for stability and then in the void allows the, the water to go through. And it's, it's also, there's the same material that's used on emergency surfaces for vehicles, for bike trucks in areas where they don't wanna have it to be like paving, but you get the benefit of that, that the grass will grow through itself.
But to Sean's question, is that gonna be always covered within toward vehicles? Then the grass summers, it'll let it dig?
No, there, this is an area where vehicles will be moved in and out of. So it will have the ability to be maintained with this impervious feature.
So in the voids, what kind of O and M are you doing on that to ensure that the voids remain open to be able to penetrate, to avoid stormwater?
So as part of our O and M agreement that will, that will be recorded as part of our PCSM plans, we'll have to inspect this to verify that it does remain impervious feature, because we're relying on that for...
Exactly, that's my point. And how often is the O and M going to be performed?
So...
The Eastern Code.
Yeah, so it's part, it, it's, it's a two-part. It's inspected as part of the township code and it's also inspected in conjunction with our MPDS permit. So we're required then, it's part of the O and M agreement and now with the new MPDS requirements, we have to submit an annual report to the conservation district just to, to verify the operation and maintenance of all of the facilities.
So is the MPDS permit for the final effluent sampling, or is it for another reason?
No, the MPDS permit is just for strictly stormwater.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes.
So is that an annual report?
Yeah, yeah, that's an annual report, yes.
That's forever, that's not just for a year.
It's a perpetuity, yes.
Can you, on that topic, so you mentioned in your testimony that underneath the grass pavers, infiltration, and that's gonna pipe through to another basin that's sort of linear to East Neils?
Right.
And then go underneath the road?
That's correct, yes.
So is that pipe that's underneath the road, is that already a pipe there? You're installing by putting...
No, there's already a pipe, and as part of our design, we're gonna, we have to analyze it for its capacity to convey the, the water that's coming off the property that is, that is, that right now goes there undetained. We're detaining it, reducing it, and still allowing it to follow the same flow path.
So I guess this might be a question for Brian. Brian, that, that pipe they're connecting into as part of the township, that is for responsibility, correct? That pipe is a township pipe?
I have to confirm with, with the public department, that's a private or private thing?
Because I guess...
In either way, their discharge, they have to prove through the design that they're discharged, that the existing pipe that's there, that they're discharged to, can handle what they're discharging.
Yeah, it's not so much the pipe I'm worried about, but then where does it go? Because I know that stormwater ordinance requires to make sure that the down drain, if appropriate easement, but if the pipe's already there, I guess what I'm thinking through is the maintenance of where it's ultimately discharging? Because if that's an older property and it just exists, and there's no maintenance agreement for that property, and now you're, I guess, theoretically, you're adding more water to, to that pipe?
Yeah.
Yeah, a different volume, but you're adding more. What if you don't have an agreement on where it's discharging?
Well...
You're making a whole other agreement.
Yeah, the, obviously, the stormwater that we're adding in, in the post-development is less than what it is in the pre-development. I understand your question is that it, it does go off the site into the street and then it crosses onto the...
It just naturally goes up today. And now you're channeling it that, and I don't, I would venture to guess that there's no stormwater management agreement to where it's ultimately discharging. So whoever, where that water's going, nobody's on hook to maintain that.
I just wanna understand something, though. Mr. Russella, are you saying that today's conditions are such that stormwater on those two properties, not the existing Kia location? There's no stormwater management controls today at all? So it basically flows to that swell that you described and through this existing pipe? And you're saying, I believe, that by developing the site, putting in the infiltration bed and the other infiltration bed, it will reduce the flow of water in a storm event into the existing swale and pipe?
That is correct, yes, that is what I'm saying.
Thanks. So it'll be less flow and volume going through the pipe?
Yes, but to answer Kristen's question regarding maintenance, we haven't evaluated that to determine if there is an off-site easement or if it's part of a municipal system.
I guarantee it's not part of a municipal system, I would venture to guess. But I mean, I don't, and I guess we could talk about this in the land development, because this really is a land problem.
Yeah, it is a land development issue.
But it's interesting, Brian, if you're aware of situations like this where we've connected into existing systems that, you know, are going into discharge points that have been there for forever and don't really have the controls in terms of identifying maintenance obligations in the future. And just anytime we can improve it, that's what we're doing through these development agreements and the stormwater agreements. So maybe it's something...
Well, plus, if it's, if the existing pipe is there and it's not adequate, that's a whole other thing too, because now we have to replace it.
They'll have to do that.
Yeah, I mean, they're all, you're gonna have to replace that. And then that's into a whole other easement and, and, you know, right-of-way or whatever it's involved in.
Uh, yeah, and in these instances, it's, it's just a, it's a stormwater agreement. I think it's, we're just dealing with stormwater at that point. And we have to quantify what the stormwater is that's coming off the road, which is a public improvement versus what's coming off the private property. So it, it's nothing that's uncommon, but certainly something that we would work through, through land development.
Joe, on A6, or to the aerial, does it identify the property that it ultimately discharges to? Do you know, Brian, can you pull that up? If you're ready to give?
Uh, if we go to the, if, if the aerial view is A6, yes, I can, I can depict how it, how it, how it works.
Which property is ultimately the...
Yeah. So what you can, I'm gonna look at this here. This helps, oh, this gets us there. So currently, there's the swell along the south side of the property, below the proposed building. So that pipe that we're talking about goes in a westerly direction to in front of the adjoining property on the south side of their building. On the north side of the street, there's a, there's a drain there. And then that drain goes underneath the street, onto the Aduy Pile property. And if you can see right here, there, there's a discharge end wall, and then there's a stone riprap section that then goes to another inlet. That inlet then continues southerly. If you go to the overall plan, maybe that'll show it better. Okay. I'm gonna have to get a little closer here. My eyes are slightly... Okay, so it, it goes across the property and then at the end, or, oh, yeah, Brian, if you have that.
Get your bearings here. You do this and do this.
So, okay. So on the south side of Neil Street, you can see this rock-lined swell that leads to this inlet. So that's inlet, then goes underneath the trailer storage of the Aduy Pile, goes all the way across their parking lot, and then it discharges in the, into this swell. And this swell is a tributary that, that travels in a westerly direction from, from over onto, from the municipal property, the county property, in a westerly direction into Westchester Borough and then intersects and ties into Goose Creek. So ultimately, all of the drainage from East Neil Street and West Town Road finds its way into this swell and then eventually finds its way into Goose Creek.
And there's floods, though, doesn't it?
Goose Creek? No. Especially not in the borough, no. But, but it, it, there is a lot more area for it to, to work.
It's above my pay grade. I'm just thinking something that the board should be concerned about, and Brian's already involved.
But we did research the flow path, and I just wanted to point that out, so we're aware of it. But understanding your initial question about the maintenance leading to that, it's a valid question.
Well, and I thought it was one property across the street. It's much more complicated than that, so.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have a question related to this concept of using the grass turf pavers, which you said, I believe, did give you a reduction of impervious, but wasn't sufficient to get to the full 30%, and that's why you had to get the zoning relief. So why, why didn't you just put more of those parking spots with grass turf pavers elsewhere on this new plan? To, to raise your green ascent for the whole property?
The, the turf pavers in the location where they are is, is the flattest part of the site. And they, it works the best for absorption. As we get beyond the site and as we migrate further to the west, there's a lot of significant change, great change. And what happens is, the water doesn't get a chance, it just runs off. Just like with porous pavement. When it's too steep, it doesn't do what it really intended. So that was the best place to, to utilize it, was right there.
Okay, thank you. And then one other question on the, this water, this new water line along Neil's, East Neil Street. You said there's a fire hydrant. Can you just explain again where the fire hydrant's placed? Is it at this one entrance off Neil Street into the property?
Yes, uh, so water, the water main currently is in West Town Road. And we're going to extend it to the west down Neil, East Neil Street. And the fire hydrant that we're going to install is, is at the end of our proposed driveway, which would be a public fire hydrant. And the, the reason for that is that when I, we initially met with the fire marshal, the distance from the next fire hydrant is greater than 600 feet. So there was another fire hydrant needed to satisfy the diameter for fire protection. And the most reasonable place to, that served multiple properties was the place that just outside of the driveway on the, on the east side of the new driveway, just outside of the cartway. So, but, but the water main will extend beyond the property to this adjoining residential property where Mr. Sapala has agreed to provide them with a public water connection.
So this, this project is paying for that extension of the water line down Neil Street?
Yes.
So that's a private agreement between you and their neighboring property, huh? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we investigated with Aqua initially if they had any plans to provide a loop, because there is water in Omar, but in part of their infrastructure plan, it isn't there. So all of this is on the developer to install. Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to follow up on Sean's question regarding the, the pavers there with the parking. I understand it has to be the most flattest area, I don't have to install it, but is there any way to expand that area east or west? Make that area larger to get your percentage impervious back? Maybe horizontally versus vertically, or even vertically?
Well, given the, the extent of relief that we obtained, extending that, because of how that's being used, it gives us the ability, because there won't be cars parked there all the time. Anyplace else we'd be extending it would be over a driveway or something that would be used more frequently. So that seemed to be the best place to put it to satisfy what we were trying to accomplish.
Any other board members with questions?
Okay.
Thank you. My final witness is Frank Devani.
I'm sorry, who was his last name?
Frank Devani.
Devani.
This is a testimony about the vibe, be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guide or sell your firm.
Yes, I do.
Can you spell your last name for me?
Sure. T as in Tom, A, V as in Victor, A and I.
Thank you.
I know what the township engineer wants solicited to think of Hydrant.
Yeah, Washington, the House. I think that's for the board to see.
Exhibit eight fifteen is your CV, Mr. Devani, correct?
It is.
And have you testified before, before in West Oshin Township?
I have.
And have you testified before this board, before the zoning board?
Yes.
And have you been said that as an expert in your prior testimony?
I believe that, yes.
In traffic engineering?
Current.
I would submit and ask that Mr. Devani recognize as an expert in traffic engineering for the purpose of this testimony.
That's fine. Any other board member?
Very good. All right, Brian. One of the benefits, one of the major benefits of this project is, I don't know about you, we haven't talked about it at all, really. And it has to do with the consolidation of access points on the East and North Street. Can you elaborate on that and describe for the board what's going to happen, what's there now and what's going to happen with this site plan if it, uh, goes forward?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, it's my understanding that my traffic study was included in the environmental impact analysis and that's sure exhibit nine of that is. It may have also been marked as A fourteen as a standard exhibit.
No, it's exhibit eight, it's part of exhibit eight twelve, the environmental impact assessment.
Okay, so, well, it's forty-three pages long. It's five pages of text, five pages of figures and the remainder being appendix material. Any application, any applicant is always seeking to do something to the benefit of the applicant. That's perfectly legal and permitted. Occasionally, you get an application that provides a benefit to the community. Sometimes it provides more than one benefit to the community. And what the council just pointed out is one of the many benefits, in fact, this application provides, that being the elimination or consolidation, if you will, of driveways along East Neil Street. But before we get there, let me just back up for, as you may have heard from the first witness, this is a consolidation of existing properties that have existing uses. There's an existing automobile care center, the Bimmer Works. There's a veterinarian site, uh, which I believe only recently closed. There was even a single-family home, which was an extension of the, the Bimmer site, nevertheless was at some point a single-family home. And of course, we have the existing dealership. So the first thing I thought of when I heard about this application was, well, what's really the net difference in traffic and trip generation? If you look at the existing uses and the existing square footages and compare that to what's proposed here, which is obviously a more holistic combined site. And again, I can't reference the exact page number of A twelve, but if you can find my EIA or my study in the EIA, and you look at the bottom of page three, you'll see a trip generation comparison table where on the left side I lay out the AM and PM peak hour trips of the existing uses, of the existing car dealership, the Bimmer Works and the veterinarian. If you look at the very bottom row of that table at the bottom of the page, you'll see there's about 38,000 square feet in aggregate, uh, generating about eighty-six trips in the morning, according to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and 119 trips in the afternoon. If you looked at the right side, you'll see that the square footage actually decreases slightly. It's about 37,000 instead of 38,000. And the AM trips drop from eighty-six to sixty-nine, if you compare left to right. And the PM drops even more noticeably from 119 to ninety. So that right there is actually a benefit not only to the applicant, but to the community at large. Those uses that we talked about have driveways today. In fact, there's four driveways that are unregulated along Neil Street. As the first witness pointed out, one of them is much closer to West Town Road today than what we're proposing. And we're effectively closing all of them except for the one driveway that's going to remain. So a fundamental tenant of access management is, you know, less is more. Every driveway, regardless of how busy or not busy it is, represents a potential point of conflict between cars coming and going. So an applicant deserves some measure of praise for eliminating driveways because it eliminates that potential conflict. When you eliminate three, that's very uncommon in my experience. So that's certainly a benefit not to be ignored. Uh, we already talked about the trip generation, as you can see on the screen. Uh, another benefit frankly is, you know, the site is now going to be integrated with Neil Street. Presently, the main access, the only access is on West Town and that will continue to be the primary access. But just like some people are, you know, hopefully routine customers and they continue to get oil changes and inspections year in, year out, some of those may reside in the borough and they will come to realize that maybe instead of using Market or Gay, they can just shoot out Neils and then make a left into that driveway and no longer have to burden themselves with going out to West Town, effectively removing traffic from West Town Road and from the signalized intersection of West Town and Neils. So that's yet another benefit this application, if approved, will provide. We did do traffic counts at the signalized intersection of West Town and Neils for the AM and PM weekday commuter peak periods. We found that almost all of the turn movements operate at level service B today during both peak hours. There was only one level service C. And as I already mentioned, we're reducing the traffic in a future condition. So those levels of service will only improve. So I just sort of quit while I was ahead and only included the existing levels of service. So I, I think I answered not only the first question, the other question that was asked so far, but maybe touched on the remainders as well. But there's a, a net reduction in traffic, significant reduction in driveways and potentially the ability to capture some traffic on site that is currently using West Town Road and will no longer have to.
The ordinance has two standards which an applicant has to meet in the context of a conditional use application. I'll read them for a bit and then may actually respond to them. Will the capacity of the road network that provides access to the property be lower than a level of service C by the applicant's proposal, which is afforded for receiving?
No.
Will the interior traffic circulation for the proposed use at the proposed location, including but not limited to axel and decellings where required, be adequate to provide safe and convenient circulation for users of the facility, visitors to the facility and emergency vehicles?
Yes.
And in your opinion, does the application comply with the conditional use requirements of the ordinance as pertains to traffic?
Yes.
Any further questions?
Could you happen to have citations of the two sections you just read?
Yeah, the first one was eighty-four dash seventy-five, capital A, number one in parents, small t in parents. The second was eighty-four dash seventy-five, capital A, number one in parents, small f in parents.
Another question for you, Sean. There's a lot of vehicles stored now in this property and proposed B. So there's gonna be a lot of, uh, traffic regarding car movers, uh, coming in and out of this property. Where do you anticipate that they would be entering into the property with you through this entrance or off of West Town Road?
As that is more of an operational question, I would defer to the applicant himself to see if he has an opinion. I can either hand the microphone back to him now or if you have other questions for me, I can attempt to field, I'll hold on to it for the time being.
I'm just wanting, just to follow up with that. Would there be any issues there in your mind, possibly as far as level of service with queuing called being caused by the presence of these car movers, either along Neil Street or West Town Road?
Well, as I mentioned, the driveway on Neils is being moved significantly away from the existing closest driveway along Neils with respect to West Town. Again, I'm not personally aware if any, uh, car transport vehicles are going to be stopped along Neils or West Town. The site doesn't have the benefit of access to Neils today. So wherever that cars are delivered are what will continue, I imagine.
Yeah, currently we have, um, cars come in on West Town Road and to, uh, see how it's laid out. They'll come in and they can go right out into Hill Street. Um, and then we also have our storage location, wherever renting space, they drop there and there's lots of room to turn, to turn around for cars.
So Jim, this one's clear. They're not parking on West Town Road or East Neils to unload your cars?
No, they're not supposed to be.
I suppose my answer is that how is it doing it?
They're not supposed to be. And they don't, we have, you know, we've sent letters in the key and the transfer companies. They're to drive in at either this location or the other location and that's where they drop cars.
So if this was a condition of approval, that you have to be, the car transportation has to be on the site itself, you would not object to that?
No, no. That's what they're supposed to be doing, so.
Uh, Mr. Devani, I have a question for you. Um, the, the trip generation table, Brian, on what page you showed, you showed that earlier. If you go back to it.
Three or five.
Table one, trip generation, page three or five. So the existing, I just want to be clear, is the existing numbers on here from the counts that you did? Or is this from the calculated standard that you referenced earlier?
It's, it's from the latter and that, that's typically how it's done. And it's basically to make sure you're really comparing apples to apples. If you're going to do the future condition using the manual, it would make the most sense to do the existing condition, especially knowing the veterinarian is like not generating, generating traffic to count today anyway.
Okay. So one, I'm not a fan of these standards, by the way. We often have them presented to us and I think they are not up to date in terms of reflecting the reality of 2025 in a growing area like Chester County. So I think they tend to undercount what we actually see in terms of reality, not undercount, but underrepresent what the truth is. Also, I noticed on your selection of the future state, you had it all under a sales standard, whatever it's called, the land use eight forty, L U C eight forty. Whereas one of the buildings that's being built is actually an auto care center, which would have been more like a nine forty-two land use. It's a repair shop, et cetera. So although there, there's an extension of kind of the office space, which is fine for the eight forty standard, I would expect it that the new, the new service center building would have been, you would have used the nine forty-two standard. I don't think it makes a hell of a lot of difference in the calculation. And just to reinforce my belief that these numbers are a little not relevant. This data for like an automobile, automobile care center is based on sites surveyed in the nineteen eighties and nineties in California or Florida. So I just want to say, although you probably had written that this will be a net reduction in and out of the site, I don't think these numbers reflect the actual volume of traffic that we might see. This is my personal belief. Do you have any response to that?
I, I do. I didn't want to interrupt you. If you look at what I have marked in the lower right corner, that's page thirty-two of my report. That is the, um, cover page, if you will, from the language code eight four zero, automobile sales new. And firstly, I'll say, I, I share some of your views. And this is the best standard that I'm sure you've also heard from other traffic engineers that's available for our use. This book is frequently updated and makes a good bit of money for I T E as well. So they love to collect the period of data and update, uh, when and where they're able. The only thing I can say that might assuage some of your concerns regarding how that building is contemplated is if you look at the description paragraph on page thirty-two of my report, you'll see that it does mention that, uh, sales and servicing take place in these facilities. So I, you know, I, I think, I think the care component of the application is not meant to be freestanding, but rather support the existing dealership and therefore I think this is not inappropriate to characterize it that way.
Thank you.
I have a question relative to mainly the veterinarian. Based on the numbers, the traffic statements in that same chart, that has been closed for some time now, right? So where would these numbers come from, the AM and PM traffic numbers?
Yes, they came, they come from the same publication, the Trip Generation Actable, which is a tool where you pick a variable, like number of units, if it's a housing development or square feet, if it's of a veterinarian, and you put that into the model and it gives you a prediction for how much traffic will generate. So as I was saying earlier, it's not a direct count. You couldn't do that even if you wanted to because as we pointed out, it's closed. So to keep everything on a level playing field and compare apples to apples, we use that resource for existing conditions that are closed or otherwise open, as well as the future condition.
So do you look at page twenty-eight and show you that without Mandy's code, what they expect? It's interesting, going back to the one that Sean was talking about. Am I reading this right on page thirty-eight that? Yeah, thirty-two, that these, the surveys that they used to get this information for the land use code eight forty was done in the eighties, the nineties, two thousand twenty-ten. Is that the most recent data that they used?
That's what it says. I believe the chair was pointing out for the different land use codes that that one was more dated.
But this is for the automobile sales eight forty, which has data as to the two ten, twenty-tens. The actual automobile care, meaning service shops, et cetera, only has days, dates from the eighties and nineties.
Yeah, I would think, it seems to me, like maybe I'm Jim who knows the best, it seems like car dealerships more are so focused on, on the service. Like they're more and more doing service and that's how, I don't know. So I, it seems like the twenty twenties and the twenty twenties, more recent data, we showed different numbers for the gap. I don't think it's critical to the application. I just think it pointed out Sean's point is probably a little taken.
Any, any other questions from the board, Mr. Devani?
I'm done. I'll remove for the additional exhibits.
I have one question for Mr. Devani. Do you anticipate any, uh, timing changes to the signal at the other side of West Town?
Again, the signal's operating well presently. Almost all level service B, there was only one C. So no, I don't anticipate any recommended changes, especially with the expectation that's, that site traffic is going to be reduced.
Brian, where is it? There's a light at Neils in West Town?
Yes.
Will they have to do any sort of permits with Penda?
That's why I asked if there'll be any timing changes.
Well, how do we, how does that, how does that work out in terms of the township seeing whether they have to do anything with Penda? Is that part of the development that they, like?
He analyzes the signal capacity in his traffic study.
Okay, so during management.
The township traffic, township traffic, if you're committed to, his re, his traffic analysis as part of the development.
Okay. So, or do we have any questions of any of the witnesses? Okay. Typically, we close the record and the board has forty-five days. I did hear a couple of conditions, so probably don't have to do a full findings of fact conclusions block because there are other parties. But I would definitely want to put something together that would be able to go forward with suggested conditions. So we can do that and then, you know, if I want to be next, you need to present the forty-five day timeframe. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Part of this application? So you want to do the other editor? Okay. Thought we were closing our.
Before we fill?
Yes.
Brian, why are you?
Somebody's calling on Dr.
So you want to use the microphone please for the, the short word for the start?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments.
I don't know if that's awful.
I do have a couple of comments. This was brought up by the planning commission.
I can read.
Sorry?
Your name?
Steve Crum, C R U N. And I'm on the planning commission. I don't represent the planning commission, but you're.
Does Steve give your home address then?
Uh, six thirteen Owen Road in Westchester. This did come in for the planning commission and the record in a couple of days reflect that we did actually talk about the cell door and sidewalks at the meeting. It's not in, on the, on the record at this point, but really reflect that we did discuss it. Um, I just wanted to bring up that the reason I brought it up and discussed it at the meeting was because it is part of the comprehensive plan to have side, I appreciate the supervisor bringing it up. It is part of the comprehensive plan to have sidewalks on Neil Streets and West Town Roads. And that intersection is a priority intersection. It was, the comprehensive plan is only six years old, so it was done relatively recently. And, um, I don't, I wasn't on the committee, but I, I think I know some reasons. It connects with the government service building and the playing fields act at, at, at out there, okay? And Neil Street will eventually connect sidewalks to the Wyeth property. And the Wyeth property is already designed with sidewalks. Whoever develop, when they gets developed, it's gonna have sidewalks all the way around. That's gonna be commercial property. The other thing is that the Scott property.
other thing is that the Scott property at some point will be developed. It's right up the road, so then there'll be an opportunity to put continued sidewalks up West Town Road. And this is, this intersection actually was a priority on the comprehensive plan. It's on page, it's a item seven. That was the third, third bullet point in this comprehensive plan is pedestrian, safe health and safety. John, I believe, was on the committee. It was obviously a priority. I just want to make those few points, how important it is that we require sidewalks and the, the saldo is followed. You passed this last year, I think it was monumental. And I would like to see personally, as well as personally sidewalks put there. I think, and the other thing is Neil Street's pretty narrow there, so you can't really walk on the street. It's dangerous. So that's another reason that I saw it was there. Thank you. Thank you for the time.